Okay, so welcome to the August 7th meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Commission. Our agenda for tonight is the presentation of the submissions on the request for proposals for the sewer district map and plan. Each team is going first to present their proposal in no more than 15 minutes, and then we're going to have up to a half hour for question and answers. First team is PW Grocer and Farrell Fritz, so I don't -- you're going to be the start?
I'll be me.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. We just want to start by thanking you for this opportunity to consider our proposal for this important project. My name is Paul Boyce. I am a senior principal at the firm at PW Grocer Consulting. I head up our engineering services, and I'll be introducing our team and taking you through the beginning of our proposal, and then handing off the technical aspects to one of our senior engineers, Brian Grogan. And then we have also our legal assistants, Farrell Fritz, with us to round out the presentation, and then open it up to questions and answers. So with that, let's just roll right into it. I basically just covered our agenda for the evening, okay? It's a four-part presentation with the introduction of who we are, you know, why we make a good team, why we're a good selection for you, the technical approaches I mentioned, and the legal aspects. Okay. PW Grocer, for those of you who don't know us, we are a civil-environmental engineering firm, consulting firm here. Headquarters located on Long Island. We were founded back in 1990. So in December, we'll be about 24 years old. Myself, I've been with the firm for 21 of those 24 years. As I mentioned, Bohemia, New York is where we're headquartered. Yeah, that's right outside the main gates of MacArthur Airport, all right? The little geography lesson. We've got a couple of small offices, a couple guys staffing our New York City office downtown. We've got one man up in Syracuse. We just opened up a small office in Connecticut this past week, which is terrific. And we've also got a compliance specialist who works out in our Seattle office. But our primary focus area is the New York metropolitan area. We like to say Montauk to Manhattan. That's where we really, you know, that's where we do the bulk of our work. We've got extensive experience and knowledge with the eastern end of Long Island, being the South Fork, North Fork, all of Southampton, East Hampton, and in-between on Sag, Shelter Island. We've got about 60 employees, the bulk of them being professionals. That includes engineers, geologists, hydrogeologists, environmental scientists, compliance specialists, you know, all very diverse, but our key, as I mentioned, key areas of expertise are civil environmental engineering. And again, we've got a very broad-based, diverse client group. Our teaming partner for this project will be Farrell Fritz. As you can see, they've been in business for almost 40 years now. They're headquartered out of Uniondale. They've got a nice local office right down the road here in Watermill. It's very key, very convenient. They also, same thing as us, which is nice, we've got a lot of overlap here in terms of geographic location, locale, and clients, and the same type of clients. They're about 85 employees, or attorneys rather. It's a nice-sized firm, and they are definitely a recognized leader in, you know, the legal industry in these types of issues, with these complex issues with, you know, municipal law and sewer district formation and whatnot. So we're very lucky and fortunate to have them with us. We've worked with them quite a bit over the years. The difference, you know, why do you want to pick PW Grocer? Just a couple of quick bullet points before I get into some more of our qual's. We've got the ability to handle everything under one roof, in terms of the engineering, the secret issues that are going to be important parts of this, you know, sewer district formation or the mapping and map and plan aspects. We also provide a professional peer review. What I mean by that is it's a fresh set of eyes. Though we didn't do the initial study that was done by Suffolk County, we're doing very, very similar work out here in Suffolk County for other areas, like the town of Islip, who are considering forming a sewer district, a little bit larger scale than the village, but we also bring a different perspective, different approach, fresh set of eyes to the work that's already been done. And we'd like to share with you those ideas if we get the opportunity. And also, we feel we're the right-sized firm for this project. We're not a sole proprietorship. We're not a, you know, several hundred-person employee firm. We've got about 60 professionals. For a project this size, you'll be working directly with senior principal in the firm, myself. Be very hands-on with this. You'll be able to pick up the phone, get me, either right then and there, or my staff will get ahold of me and I'll get right back to you. We'll be available to you around the clock, and this size project is right in our hitting zone. It's exactly the type of work we'd like to do, and we're very capable. Some of our qualifications, and I tried to base this mostly with eastern Suffolk County, the east end of Long Island, and sewage-type projects. That project I just mentioned, the town of Islip, that's identical to what you guys are considering. We did the same thing that was done for Village of Southampton. We're doing the feasibility, the sewer study, you know, laying out all the pump stations, the pipes, the sewage treatment plant, the whole nine yards, looking at all the environmental issues with regard to it. And that study's going up to the state this month, the end of this month. EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation, for funding and, you know, approval or ranking to get the grants and whatnot. And then the next phase will be the map and plan report, identical to what's going to be going on here, all right? Town of Islip, just to give you an idea, it's residential, commercial, and it's about, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, about 13,000 parcels or something like that. So it's a pretty big area. South Shore, Long Island, same thing, nitrogen problems going into the Great South Bay, similar to Agawam Lake. Village of Sag Harbor, another village local to the east end here. We are the engineer for the village. We're also the engineer of record for their sewage treatment plant. What's nice about them, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, is they've got a sewer district that serves a downtown business area, just very similar to what you guys are looking to do. So we've got experience with this. Town of Southampton, another client of ours. One of our niches as a civil-environmental firm is groundwater. We do a ton of groundwater work. We're doing that right here in Southampton for the town at the landfill. Shelter Island, we're doing a ton of work out there. We have a ton of work out there with their -- there's a couple areas that are sewered and have a sewage treatment plant. Small area, you know, seasonal fluctuations like the village is going to see, you know, so we're very familiar with this stuff. We've got other -- a brand-new sewage treatment plant we just designed is Amber Court. I believe that's in Smithtown. Brookhaven National Laboratory, it's a federal facility. We're doing an upgrade to a 3 million gallon a day sewage treatment plant there. Again, it's eastern Brookhaven, almost to the border with Riverhead out there. Dowling College, that's in that same study area of Islip. That's a groundwater discharge plant, very, very shallow groundwater conditions, similar to what you guys have to contend with. Nescantet, an upgrade to a sewage treatment plant. And then also, just like you've seen before from others, we do a lot of work with Suffolk County DPW with regards to wastewater. Quickly, with the town of Islip, that's a nice figure there. That's the entire area from Great River all the way to Bayport. What you see in the orange and the red color, that's the shallow groundwater areas we have to contend with, with regards to sewer-ing and sewage treatment plants. And immediately to the south, you see the Great South Bay. The water's right there, nitrogen underflow to the bay. That's a big, big problem. We're trying to work and to address that. We've done it all for this. We've done the economic analysis, the cost-benefit analysis, the preliminary design, all the mapping that we're going through right now, similar to what you guys are going to be dealing. Again, perfect project. Village of Sag Harbor, which I touched on, similar to what you guys, similar flows of you. Services a downtown commercial or business area. They deal with real high seasonal fluctuations, just like we saw today. You walk out on the sidewalk, it is packed out there. You know, peak day there is like triple what the average day is, you know? So it's real, you've got to know how to handle this. It's a big deal. As I mentioned, with the village engineer, the engineer of record, quite happy working for those guys, and they're happy with working with us, so great relationship. Shelter Island, same thing. As I mentioned, this isn't just commercial, but it does a lot of residential as well. And they've also got the seasonal fluctuation, as you will, out here on the east end, you know, the tourism, the summer folks that like to come out and enjoy the island. And also out there, it is very tight, all right? Just as it is here in the village. It's not a lot of, you know, open space, and you've got to be aware of that and be able to work with that. Brookhaven Lab, as I mentioned, we're in the middle of finalizing a tertiary treatment system, and that was to remove a discharge to the headwaters of the Pecanic River to go to groundwater. And that was ordered by DEC. So same thing as what you guys are going to be dealing with, is a groundwater discharge. That's a 3 million gallon a day plant, also, you know, a lot of engineering, a lot of study went into that. A very nice project that should be wrapping up this September. And that was a little bit about who we are, what we can do for you. I'm going to turn it over now to Brian Grogan, one of our senior engineers at PW Grocer, also an expert in wastewater and a former Suffolk County Department of Health services employee.
Well, one of the first steps that we have to do with this map and plan is to establish the actual sewer district boundary. So we looked at the initial boundary that was developed during the report that was done for DPW. We know that there's been some comments through the town of potentially expanding this boundary, and that's something we're willing to work with you guys and determine what other parcels should be included in this. You know, once that's, again, once we've determined this boundary, we're fully capable of preparing the actual formal meets and bounds descriptions of the map and plan for submission up to New York State.
Good.
Yep. The next step is going to be the sewer district design criteria. We're going to be more or less peer reviewing what was done prior. Now, if we expand the boundaries of the district, obviously, we're going to have to include the additional flows from those potential users, as well as, you know, going back and looking at the Village Center master plan and determining if there is additional capacity that's going to be required for expansion of businesses, you know, whether it be, you know, a restaurant that wants to add four extra seats that can't right now due to health regulations, they may be able to with the design of the sewage treatment plant. So we're allowed for a potentially modest growth within the village. Again, we're also going to evaluate, as Paul touched on, there's seasonal flow variations at sewage treatment plants. Again, same thing for waste strength. So if you have a lot of restaurants, there's different types of design criteria that need to be accounted for in the design of a sewage treatment plant. Again, we have, you know, when it comes to sewage treatment plant design, there's multiple processes out there. I think the report that was previously done evaluated three of those. I think there are a few others that are out there, and potentially a few that are more cost-effective at doing what we need to do. Right now, you know, our level of treatment is via conventional septic systems, which, as we all know, remove very little nitrogen. We can evaluate and pick the best plant, not only that spends the most, you know, that reduces nitrogen to the lowest level, but the most cost-effective level. I think that's really going to be a big driving force here, is we want to make sure that this project is actually financially feasible. Otherwise, we're not going to go anywhere. The sewage collection system, I think it was proposed as a kind of hybrid of gravity collection systems and low-pressure force mains, which are, you know, similar to what's done in Village of Patchogue. Again, we're going to look at that and see, is there any way we can save some money to, again, reduce the financial impacts of this project? As with our Islip study, we're coming to realize that the financial driving force of this is very critical. We need to make sure that this is affordable to each and every business owner, otherwise this project won't get off the ground. So again, it's something we're going to consider. The next step, obviously, and the big one, is the capital and annual costs. So we have to kind of sit back and determine what are the actual costs for installation of all the equipment that goes down to every pipe, you know, what are we going to encounter if we have to reroute water mains, other things, underground utilities, as well as the sewage treatment plant? You know, from the initial report, it appears that there's some, in my opinion, some financial savings that can be had at the treatment plant. It looks like we can reduce that by a considerable amount, between 15 and 20 percent of that cost. That'll drop the overall cost. You know, again, we've talked about, then you have the operation and maintenance of the ongoing system. We have to evaluate that and determine what those annual costs are going to be. That way, we can prepare that for, you know, submission to the state, and also for a potential referendum to all the people in the village. Yep, Paul. The next step that you would ask us is to analyze the tax implications. So again, this is going to, and I think our legal advisor kind of touched on this, depending on how we form this district, you know, it depends on who's taxed, how they're taxed, when they're taxed, you know, if it's a benefit basis, so everyone within the district is taxed equally for the debt service. O and M is typically done for actual flow, so you pay your pro-rata share. That way, you don't have any arguments of someone uses more or less water than I do. Everyone pays their individual share. And then we can make a recommendation as to which is the preferred method of, you know, going through about this and recovering the capital costs. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to either Chris Ken or Eric Kregman.
You may get both of us, but very quickly. I'm here because Paul Grocer and I have worked together for a very long time, more years than I'd like to think about, but I think our first matter together was 35 years ago. So he gave me a call, and Chris has more direct sewage experience as a former commissioner in the Calverton District and deputy supervisor in Riverhead, where he oversaw their sanitary issues. The main thing that Farrell Fritz has is a great deal of depth and expertise in this area. I've been practicing environmental law at least 35 years, actually more, more like 45. I had the good fortune to have Paul Travis as a client for many years, so he can give you a closed-doors evaluation at any time. And all of my work has been land use and, excuse me, and environmental work and litigation. And one of the nice things about the way we work is that there's not a hand, if there happens to be litigation, it's the same people who are involved in it. So we can, A, avoid litigation, or advise you about what would be a better way to operate so that you don't create problems that lead to litigation, as well as dealing with that effort. The firm itself represents the following villages currently: Oldfield, Huntington Bay, Hewlett-Neck, Flandome Manor, Salt Air. We have in the past represented Old Westbury, Sands Point, East Rockaway, and Mill Neck. I was the town attorney for East Hampton. My colleague David Gilmarten Jr. was the town attorney for Southampton Town. I currently am doing litigation for both for East Hampton Town and the Village of East Hampton, both of which are land use and environmental matters. So, and Chris, I've talked to you about, he will tell you all about himself, he's good at that. Charlotte Biblo, who is also a part of our team, is our kind of heavy hitter environmental for underground groundwater contamination issues. So the main thing we have is that kind of depth and experience, both at the village level, the municipal, day-to-day operating, and also particularly in the environmental and sewage concerns.
I'm going to spin this around, just because I think it'd be easier for me. As Eric said, my name's Christopher Kent. I'm a partner at Farrell Fritz. I do want to give a little bit of history, because I think the background is very important in doing this type of work for the municipalities. First of all, my parents were residents of Southampton Village for a very long time before they passed away, and I lived here for a while. Two of my sisters still live here, so I do have connections to the village. I live in the town of Southampton, I live in the village of Quogue. I've been involved protecting groundwater on the east end of Long Island since 1981. My first job right out of college was working in the Suffolk County Legislature. I worked for the Suffolk County legislator from the east end, Greg Blass. I was his legislative aide before I went to law school. I've been practicing law now for 26 years. A lot of it spent in project development, land preservation, and environmental matters. I ran for office, I was a town board member in the town of Riverhead in the late 90s. And with being a town board member, you were also a commissioner of their sewer district. Riverhead has its own sewer district, and while we were on the, while I was on the town board and acting as a commissioner of the sewer district, we did a Route 58 expansion, where we created a commercial sewer district that fed into the Riverhead sewer district. And we also formed a sewer district in Calverton at the Epcal site. And I was very active in both the mapping and the planning of both of those sewer projects. That was for a town, though. It's a little different. Towns have the ability, through state-enabling legislation, to form sewer districts, and they tax them a little differently. They can put them right onto their tax bills based on the assessed values. Villages are slightly different. They do sewer systems, and they also do it based on the benefit of the users, but it's similar, but it's a little different. You don't need state-enabling legislation, you can run it right through your Board of Trustees, but you still need to go through the entire process, which is the map and plan. And that's really where you're going to develop a lot of your concepts, when you get into the mapping and the planning, and you figure out how much it's going to cost, and how many users you can spread that cost over. And that really becomes the critical thing. So some of my other experience, after working in the, being on the town board, I was a, subsequent years, I was a town attorney in Riverhead, and then I became the deputy supervisor in Riverhead, and I dealt with a lot of sewer issues because of the outflow pipe that Riverhead has into the Pecanic Bay. That became an issue both at the DC level mostly, and in the New York State Department of Health. So I was involved with both of those agencies quite a bit. Later, I went to become the director of real estate for Suffolk County, and later the chief deputy county executive of Suffolk County. And in the time I was there, we did, we were doing a lot of sewer work. It was a big policy of Suffolk County, and we initiated 23 different sewer studies throughout Suffolk County, studying how we could bring sewers to the many downtown areas, including one of the ones we initiated just near the end of my term was in Flanders. So you might be reading about that that's still going on. It was something we initiated while I was there. We also started an idea of coming up with money to assist community-based sewer districts and sewer systems, which was the Suffolk County Sewer Infrastructure Committee, which utilizes money raised from the Quarter Cent Fund that's collected from sales tax to fund community-based sewer systems. So that's another thing I can assist you with, a lot of identification of where to get help. Because you guys are a small village, and there's not a lot of taxpayers who are within this district, and you're going to need as much state funding, county funding that could be made available to you. We're also going to have to be creative in how you charge back the cost of the system. Again, something that I think I can assist you with in the planning phase, because I know there's multiple benefits from sewer-ing. One, it's primarily to protect groundwater, but groundwater leads into surface waters. And I know the goal is to protect Agawam Lake, and so in order to incur these expenses, though, you're going to have to let the people who are benefiting from this realize that there is some also economic benefit to doing sewers. So it's a combination of protecting the environment while at the same time creating some economic opportunities for those who are being serviced by the sewers. So that's all going to come in your policy analysis of what you're doing in your map and plan. So some of the other things that we worked on recently when I was with the county was the formation of the Ronkonkoma Hub, another sewer district that we formed, that was in the formation at the time I was leaving. We initiated it. It's now been funded through New York State under a consolidated funding application. So that's something else we can get into, how to make those applications and how to secure some monies through New York State. Basically, though, legally, how it works is that it starts with a map and plan, and that's your idea, and how you want to do it, and what areas you want to serve. From then, it comes to public notices. Oh, okay, I'm getting the, cut it short. We can assist the village attorney in doing all the public notices, filing all the legal requirements, having all the public hearings that are necessary to form a district. And we can work with both the local village and the state of New York to see it reach its fruition, okay?
Ready to do questions and answer now? I mean, maybe to start, can maybe talk about what you think is both similar and different about the facility in the Village of Sag Harbor and how it's worked or has not worked for the village? Who on your team knows it best, or?
I know a little bit about it, so yes. The one big difference between you guys and Sag Harbor is going to be your outfall structure, all right? Sag Harbor goes to the harbor. That's the surface water discharge, all right? Other than that, it's going to be very similar in terms of how it's set up, how it's mapped out. And they are a sewer system, as opposed to a sewer district, and Chris was giving you a pretty good description on how that works. But not if you're inside that business district, and if you're not hooked up to the sewer, they're not paying, okay? So that's an important point to consider. So you want to get as many of these people hooked up as you can, if not all of them, all right? And also, it affects the environmental concerns, not just the tax base or the revenue source to help operate, maintain and operate the system, all right? The more you can get on there, as long as it all fits into the sized plant that we come up with, the more nitrogen you get out of the water, the better it's going to be for the lake.
I think we're assuming that is a required difficulty.
Perfect.
I'm pretty wrong there.
Perfect. But that would then be another difference between Sag Harbor, if they're not hooked up, they're not paying, as opposed to Southampton, but similar in size, and it's serving the same type of, I don't want to say client base, but, you know, district, business, commercial, you know, it's not residential. And it's got, again, very similar to what you guys are going to experience, that seasonal fluctuation. That is going to be critical to be able to maintain and manage, all right? And that's, like I said, the flows, based on what we've seen come out of the county report, very close to what we're going to see, or what we're seeing out in Sag Harbor.
Why would Sag Harbor not require the businesses to hook up? What would be the purpose not to require that?
That's a good question. I'd have to get back to you on that one. I don't know off the top of my head. Paul Grocer can answer that.
Can you briefly comment on the study that was done for the county, with the public health?
For the village?
Yes.
Village of Southampton? Sure, it's a similar study as to what we're doing for the town of Islip right now. It's basically, it came, it's a feasibility type of study to take a look at, you know, what do we got to put out here to make this work, you know? What kind of nitrogen removal are we going to see? What's the economics involved, you know? How's this thing going to get funded? How are we going to pay for it in the future in terms of, you know, operation and maintenance? We said that cost analysis, that cost-benefit analysis, you know? And basically, the outcome of it was, all right, if we don't get an outside source to help fund this, either through grants or, you know, state revolving fund, we're not going to be able to make this work. And that's what it was said with the village. So the key thing, and then you heard Chris and Eric talking about, you know, finding the funding and, you know, getting it approved and getting that money from outside sources is going to be crucial.
You mentioned nitrogen removal. I thought the problem, especially with the Lake Agawam, was the phosphates, not the nitrogen so much, as far as pollution and algae's and...
Well, the phosphates are going to come from, you know, it could be fertilizers, and years ago, it was laundry detergents and things like that, but that could certainly be contributing to it. But if I read the study correctly, it was nitrogen is really what causes those algal blooms and stuff, and the eutrophication of the lake itself. So it's...
Can I ask you, you're saying your plant will not take out the phosphates?
Oh, no, no, no. Brian could probably speak to this better than I can. There will certainly be phosphate removal, but really, that target, you know, element or compound is going to be the nitrogen.
There's one other question. When and if we do the sewer treatment plant, the location of the plant is going to be a major issue.
Agreed.
Nobody's going to want it in their backyard.
Yep.
And one of the locations, we have a board member, it's not too far from her house, she's not too happy about that. But if you have a plant running, for example, in Sag Harbor, I know where generally a plant is, I've never smelled anything out, but we would have to probably have tours or something like that to...
Well, I want to just explain to you guys another difference between Sag Harbor and what would most likely be proposed for you guys in terms of a sewage treatment plant. Sag Harbor is an outdoor plant, okay? That means the tanks are open to the atmosphere. If it rains or snows, it's landing in the tank. You guys would certainly need something that's enclosed, all right? And that would also help mitigate the odors. Sag Harbor is right down on the harbor. There's a lot of other odors by the harbor, you know, low-tide type smells, all that fun stuff. It's not as evident or prominent, and it's also predominantly, if not exclusively, business down there, too. It's not, there wouldn't be a residential component along that harbor, like possibly where we're looking to locate, or where the study said to locate, the plant in the village.
The plant would also be provided with an active odor control system.
That's correct, also.
Within the enclosed building to basically chemically, you know, wireless treat the air that's encircling inside the building, so as to eliminate any real sources of odor at that point.
And if I could, to Brian's point, we've done that type of stuff on Shelter Island, where the plant is surrounded by residential. It's enclosed, there were still odor issues. We undertook massive studies and came up with a solution in terms of treating the air before it's discharged to the atmosphere, to cut down or eliminate the odors. So it's doable.
How much would the plant be able to remove other types of chemicals, medicines, things like that, that end up in the systems?
Yeah, that's a very good question. You're talking about stuff like some of these synthetic organic chemicals, or maybe personal care products... care products, that, you know, that may end up going down into this, you know, the business district. There could be soaps, there could be detergents, again, you know, cleaning solutions, yep. The process, it's pretty good, a lot of them, and you will see significant removal. Is it going to get 100%? Certainly not. Like I said, some of these personal care products, or even pharmaceuticals, things that, you know, wash through the body and end up in the wastewater. A lot of these treatment processes, it's not there yet to remove it. And we're seeing stuff, you know, even down to the parts per trillion, which is, you know, astronomically small, you can't remove it.
Can I ask a question between the team, between the Valfritz and?
Sure.
So what do you think is a realistic timeframe to create the map and plan? And then, sort of what is your experience in terms of how long it gets, it takes a district to be co-created? What, from your experience?
The first part is the map and plan.
Right.
We, that, we could probably have that done if we were to get the go-ahead, say, September 1st. It would definitely be done by the end of the year, right, Brian? I would say a couple months at the most to get the, the map and plan done, probably sooner.
Okay.
And you'd have to file that.
Right. That's just the engineering portion.
You'd have to file that with New York State. It goes to the Commissioner of Health.
Okay.
They would review it, there'll be some discussions.
Right.
You have to have public hearings.
Right. And we have to do secret review, I presume?
Yep.
Secret review, absolutely. All the state environmental, all the direct requirements, so.
All on faith.
And then, you know, you'd have to have your village meetings.
Right.
You have to go up next to public, public notices. Takes, you're probably looking at about a good, to not be forcing it.
Right.
To do a, you know, a good hard look, determinative analysis. You're probably looking at a year at least, or maybe 18 months.
And in other places you've worked, have the people held referendums about the sewer district, or how have people generally done it?
That's something that the village should discuss. You're not going to be getting New York State enabling legislation, so you're not going to be having that to fall back on.
Right.
You can want to, that's a village, that's a board decision, it's somewhat political in nature.
But it's not, it's not, it's not required.
It's not required.
Okay.
There is permissive referendum.
So it is required to the extent you're doing bonding.
Right.
Permissive.
Right. So there's going to be some bonded indebtedness.
Can you explain what a permissive referendum is?
A permissive referendum is if, when you, when you adopt certain types of acts by local law, where you're going to incur financial indebtedness, the, the local voters could bring a petition, when it's signed by a certain number of gubernatorial elect, people who voted in the last governor's election, I think it's 5%, they could force something on the ballot. So sometimes it's, it might even be better, especially for you guys, to just vote to have a referendum. But if you're, I wouldn't even do that until you know how much it's going to cost. But you want that referendum to be inclusive. You want them to, you want to be able to tell them what you're doing, how much it's going to cost, how long it's going to take. So there's some upfront things that have to be decided, that's the map and plan process.
Right.
At the end of the map and plan process, that's when you can determine how much it's going to actually cost you to do what you've decided to do. I think at that point, that it might be good to have a referendum. If you want that kind of cover from your electorate, that's up to, that's a thing you want to decide. If you feel strong enough that the Board of Trustees can make a decision and not, can have the backlash, you can do that. And then leave it open, I think permissive referendum on this would be 30 days. They'd have to file a petition.
They have to file within 30 days of the act.
Yeah. You've got the village clerk.
Right.
They'd have to file, they call, some people call it initiative in referendum, it's a petition referendum.
Right.
They'd have to file a petition with the county clerk. The signatures will all verify, and if they have enough signatures, then you have to be forced to put it on the ballot. So that sometimes you've got a decision you have to make, whether you want to put it on the ballot in your own motion, a resolution of the board, or let the people force you to put it on the ballot.
We have a concern about runoffs in the village as well. In doing this study, is that something that can also be included with the sewer district, how to handle runoffs?
Well, you're talking the map and plan. I mean, if there are combined sewer, you know, storm and wastewater, but I don't think that's going to work here. Okay? That, that would be extraordinary undertaking to build a plant that could handle both.
Well, not a plant that would handle it, but it would, it would be a gravity, just to filter water before you.
Yeah, that's, it's something that should be considered, you know, especially if we're, you know, open cut to put in some pipes, you know, you can put in some drainage, drainage infrastructure at the same time, so you get, you know, you don't have to dig the road up twice. You save some money that way. That, right now, is outside the current scope.
Right.
But it's something that could certainly be added. I'd have to take a look at it from a separate perspective in terms of how it's funded, or what type of grants are available for it, because right now, we're solely focused on the wastewater, but that's, that's an excellent possibility. You know, and treat the water, the stormwater runoff before it's discharged at a central facility. Maybe if it's just, you know, static-type screens for grit removal, or, you know, oil-water separators, or the vortex-type chambers for floatables, you know, you can, you get a lot of good removal with just some simple structures, too. But the downside, it's not set it and forget it. You've got to maintain this stuff, too. So there would be O and M costs for the village.
And certainly, I assume, as part of your map and plan, you're going to talk to us about what it's going to take to maintain this.
Oh, absolutely.
What are our options, in terms of who could maintain it?
Yep, yep. In terms of operators, or who the village may need to hire, and all that fun stuff. Yeah, that's all going to be in there.
Okay. Any questions? I guess one other question. So just, I think, I think you said it, but as part of your study, you're going to look at what are our options going to be, in terms of where the plant could be located? Because there was a suggestion made in the study, but that's not necessarily.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We've already been taking a look at this, and it's, you don't have a lot of, you know, land available to you that would be able to, you know, you need certain setbacks from the plant, and then we have, as we call it, the outfall structure. In this case, we're looking at, you know, subsurface leaching pools, something like that, you know? So you need some space.
Right.
We'd be happy to discuss it further, and if there are other options, you know, nothing's jumping off the page at me right now.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd be happy to help you look for some.
Okay.
As part of our study, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for having us.
All right. So the next presentation is by Lombardo Associates. Again, try to keep the presentation to around 15 minutes, and then we'll do question and answer afterwards.
Perfect. If you could introduce your team.
Yes. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for the invitation to meet with the plan commission to review our proposal. My name's Pio Lombardo, President Lombardo Associates, and our team consists of bound engineers. And with me, I have Charlie Barther, who was the former DPW Commissioner for the county, and Leslie Mitchell was a deputy commissioner with the county, and Gary Rubenstein, who's a project engineer with Lombardo Associates. So this is the essence of the team that we're proposing for the project. And what I'd like to do with you, because I trust you've all had a chance to review the proposals and see what. So we're going to not try to repeat things. I'm really going to just try to hit the, if you will, tops of the waves on them, just for summary purposes. And I want to maximize the amount of time that we allocate to answering questions such as you may have. The first document that I passed out is really a summary of our qualifications and experience, so that you can have confidence that you, you have an experienced team here. And if I may, I'm just going to go through the, the slides very quickly. If there's anything you want me to elaborate on, I will, but I don't want to waste too much time on this. But we've been the engineer of record for over $200 million a project, have won.
I guess you put that down and it's interfering with my mic.
Got it. Okay. Have won National Engineering Excellence Awards on the projects. We are currently the town of East Hampton's wastewater engineer, comprehensive wastewater engineer. That's going to become public in the next month, and you'll see, we've put together a lot-by-lot plan for the entire town. And we would encourage you to speak with Larry Cantwell, the supervisor there, regarding our work. We're working with Charlie's firm on the Canoe Place Inn in Hampton's Bay, and have developed an innovative nitrogen removal technique there that has no discharge of nitrogen from the project, or no net discharge. We've worked for numerous communities in New York State, including villages and the town. We engineered the first decentralized onsite wastewater management district in New York in 1980. The legislation was frankly written for us at the time, so we're used to working with the lawyers. I should mention that we've collaborated with Vincent Messina and his firm on the project, so, but naturally, we'll work with whatever legal firm you are comfortable with. And our focus for the last close to 40 years now has really been working like, with communities like yours. Small communities that have centralized business districts that need to improve their wastewater practices from just septic systems. And our specialty has been working on or applying alternative techniques, because conventional techniques typically are expensive, or too expensive for the community, and also engender secondary impacts that are not desirable. So we deal with those soft issues, if you will, quite aggressively and upfront, because those are significant for, significant part of the population. We've engineered water reuse systems. I wrote the water quality model that's used for TMDL purposes by EPA to this day, so we understand water quality behavior. Many of you know that we've worked on the Lake Agawam project, have put together a proposed plan on how to deal with that. Importantly, the issue with any freshwater lake, and Lake Agawam in particular, is phosphorus is really the nutrient that controls the water quality, not nitrogen. Nitrogen's important, but it's not the silver bullet. Phosphorus is the silver bullet. Here's a listing just of the manuals that we've written for EPA over the years, eight manuals, and as you can see, they're all focused on decentralized solutions for small communities. Okay? And we've been doing that since 1976. And we understand phosphorus quite well, and we wrote this manual for EPA on how phosphorus geochemistry in the subsoil environment. And frankly, I would be concerned that with a treatment plant, some of the techniques that remove phosphorus from septic tank effluent will disappear, and you could almost go backwards on that issue. Because right now, according to the data, groundwater does not have a lot of phosphorus in it. In other words, the soils are taking it out. And if you change the chemistry, that may not happen anymore. I can be happy to go into the chemistry on that, but we've worked with Bound now for, I guess it's the last couple of years, on a number of projects, as well as we've worked with FPM, who we would be looking to, to do some of the environmental assessment work. Importantly, groundwater impacts is going to be the issue, and that's their specialty. Here's a listing, just quickly, of Bound's extensive experience on civil engineering and wastewater projects, and a listing of a number of the projects that they've done in Suffolk County as well. So you're working with people that are very knowledgeable about the local area, and obviously, Charlie's background with, as a DPW Commissioner speaks volumes. These are just some of the manuals that we've written, and, and I'll just quick, we've done some work for private clients in the village, so we know a lot of the details of what's going on. And we would, you know, some of them were a little shocking that we investigated. We also, this one on the left here, have done a lot of work on preparing, engineering letters for bonding purposes. We've written the engineer letters for over 500, or $400 million of bonds, so we're very familiar with putting together proformas and putting together documents that demonstrate to the bonding people that they're going to get paid. So we're, with all due humility, we're pretty adept at the financial aspects of these things, because we know, at the end of the day, the user charge has to be affordable, and it has to be bondable. Our experience includes this project in Maryland, which has 40 miles of septic tank effluent systems with 34 pump stations on a peninsula just south of Annapolis. And the technology we use there is an earlier version of what we've, sort of, the nitrate system that we've developed in the, come in the recent years. And we've used constructed wetlands, and we've worked in deep, excuse me, shallow groundwater conditions, as well as even working in Chesapeake Bay. That system was a 900,000 gallon a day plant. This was the, the onsite district was a Woodstock, New York, which was established in 1980. And just to give you a sense of what some of these systems looks like, these are photographs of nitrate systems in areas where we've put them on the parking lots, because, so you know, that's one of the aspects of our proposal that we're emphasizing is a major attribute for the village, is to use them in parking lots. And that project is in Massachusetts. This is a project that we've engineered a good close to now, 10 years ago, in Malibu, and is still operational, where most of the system is entirely below the parking lot, and cars parked on it all the time, and it's right adjacent to high-end retail establishments and restaurants. No, we don't have any odor problems. The reason we don't have any odor, we aggressively deal with it, proactively. Okay? This is the data at this facility. The key thing on the left, if you can read it, our total nitrogen levels are all under three. That's been that way, again, for, since 2007, when this facility started up. Okay? And it achieves what we call, in California, it's Title 22 reuse standards, so we're producing water that meets unrestricted water reuse standards with a system that's relatively passive. Operator goes there four hours a week, and there's not a lot of energy use. We're not, we don't have blowers and irradiation equipment, so it's a very low-energy and importantly effective system that's highly reliable. It also deals with varying flows very easily. We'll go from 5,000 gallons a day to 15,000 gallons a day on weekends and that type of thing, and that's not a problem for our treatment system. That's the county proposal that you're familiar with. We're going to use that as only a reference point when we start comparing some of the options that we've looked at. Again, we know this is not something that's really implementable. And so that's this set of slides for your reference, sort of our qualification statement. The next set of slides really talks about, let me call it, the preliminary engineering work that we've done for the village, and where we see the opportunities for the village. Okay? The key issues of our approach is that we see the design flow not needing to be 150,000 gallons a day. When we looked at the details on the flow, 35,000 gallons per day, plus or minus, of that 150 is the hospital. And the hospital's not part of the district. So what we're saying by noting that observation is that the treatment plant cost can go down by a healthy 25 to 33%. So automatically, the system is, in our opinion, would be oversized if you had 150. We believe that a predominantly gravity collection system is possible, and I'll show you a layout of that. You don't have to have pumps at all of the individual properties with everybody having their own generator. We believe the decentralized approach allows things to be tailored. Obviously, using the parking lot allows multiple purposes to be achieved. We also identified vacant properties outside of the district or the proposed business area that the village owns that looks like candidates, that could be candidates. We can pursue reuse, and our emphasis is going to be on low-energy passive systems, because, again, we believe those are the least cost from a capital as well as annual operation maintenance costs. This slide illustrates the work that we've done that identifies prospective sites within the village. Carrie, can you focus that just a little bit better? And, there you go. Thank you. So you can see there's quite a few sites that exist, and predominantly, they're parking lots. Now, there's some land, what's that land called to the left?
Off the Coopers Arm Road.
Right. That the village owns, that's possible. The next slide, it was, we went through and looked at each one of them in detail, who owns the parcel, and we made estimates on what their capacity is. In our opinion, there's sufficient capacity within the business district area to deal, to treat and dispose of the wastewater. So that's the good news. There's some variances that are needed for this to get it permitted. However, we're of the opinion the variances are doable. Okay? That's the only quote "risk" from the Health Department. This illustrates why we believe that a gravity system is, is doable, that basically, Windmill Lane is the, is the low point. These areas were drained, we did a layout here, and there's just three pump stations that they would all drain to, and there would be a force main here, taking it to whichever site is selected for treatment. site is selected for treatment. So, these three pump stations would have emergency generators, but that's it. Okay? And they could even be interconnected if desired. And now, we're talking about what we call peanut pumps. They're really small and don't demand a lot of electricity. The emergency generators are going to be well under 25 kilowatts. So, they're pretty small. And because it's only liquid that they're transporting, they're not demanding. This illustrates properties within the village that are owned by the village, outside of the, the business area that's highlighted there. So, there's candidates outside. Naturally, one's going to pay for additional piping costs to get to those sites. However, they may be desired. So, hopefully, we're demonstrating to you that we're pretty comprehensive. We're not wedded to any single approach and really trying to just maximize the best solution for the village. That's our goal, is to deliver the best solution for you. We put together a preliminary cost estimate, so you can see the financial benefits of the approach that we're recommending. And by and large, we see a savings of at least a third versus what's been proposed. And we don't think it's hard to achieve that 35 plus or minus percent cost savings, both in capital costs and annual operation costs. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this. We then went and looked at how it affects the individual property owners. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, generally speaking, it's a 35 percent cost savings versus the county sort of approach. Now, you may be saying, well, wait a minute, yeah, this is a lot of numbers. But we have validated that our approach is less costly through the project that Charlie and I are working on in Hampton Bays. The owner there took our alternative design and the conventional design, sent it to their contractors, had them price it, and told us that the septic tank effluent approach was half the cost. So, we have local validation of that. Plus, we've seen that, you know, we can show you a text, that's non-uncommon. That's the reason why we propose these approaches. This is our scope of work that we've outlined. It's a very detailed, comprehensive lot-by-lot approach. We've showed you in the proposal how all of these things are integrated to go from planning all the way to construction and operation maintenance, as well as we provided you with an org chart that shows how the team members are working together on the project. And very importantly, on the budget, we know that you have a budget allocation of about 100,000, according to the newspapers. So, our proposal is a little more if we, if the village desires that very detailed approach. We're happy to reduce that cost and negotiate with you. The bottom line is really going to be, is the scope and the details, what do you want to assume versus what, and public participation is a significant component of that. As we mentioned in the proposal, we will establish a local office if successful, not only for any work that we do for the village, but we've got serious continuing work that we're doing for East Hampton, that we would expect that will go on for many years. We provided a schedule here that shows that by and large, the facility plan, the mapping plan can be prepared and completed within six months, so that if you were going to have a vote, you could have a vote. The village could have a vote on it in the spring. And that we, our style is to have extensive public participation, so that when there's a vote, you know the outcome. We've, you've already, let me done a lot of straw polling prior to the meeting, so that you've worked through any obstacles or barriers that may exist. So, with that, I will sort of wind up and ask, happy to answer any questions directed to myself or any of the team members.
Can you talk a little bit about, when you talk about this alternative technology, does it do the same level of cleaning of the wastewater? And, and how does the water coming out of it compare?
Okay. Well, absolutely. Is, and the best example I can reference to is our project in Malibu here, that is sampled every week. The, and it's California, so you can imagine the requirements. And we are achieving what's referred to as unrestricted water reuse standards. In the criteria, we have to get total nitrogen on the 10, we get it to three. No, three is considered the limit of technology. Okay? We do better than three. And if you really wanted to, we'll guarantee down below, we know how to get it below one. Turbidity is the other factor that's used, and turbidity is .6-ish. 10 is the standard. So, it's very clean water. It's, again, unrestricted reuse except for potable purposes. So, we can achieve those, and the California standards are the gold standard in the industry.
What is the size of that system?
That system there is equivalent to 45,000 gallons a day of flow.
And what do you think ours is like?
120.
120 is probably a number. And the attractiveness of the techniques that we use is that they're modular. So, it's easy to add to them. And you could add in, for instance, the initial phase could be certain property owners that really want to be in. If, as others want to come in, it's not hard to expand them. So, it's very modular, in small pieces.
You indicated that a variance would be required from the Department of Health.
The variances that it's required is the setback requirements. See?
But also because of the depth and the high water table?
No, it's going to be, it's the setbacks.
When you say setback, can you explain?
Property lines, habitable buildings are the key setback requirements. And that's going to apply for any system. And the only parcel in the village that complies with those setback requirements is the dog park. There's no other parcel in the village that complies with-
Or adjacent to the dog park?
Excuse me?
Adjacent to the dog.
Well, it's the parcel that's adjacent to the police station.
Okay.
So, that's the only parcel that complies with all of the setback requirements. And it's 200 feet to habitable building.
Habitable building.
75 feet.
150 feet off the property line.
So, those are the, and we're guardedly optimistic that the variances can be obtained on those.
But there's also the distance from the water table.
We will comply with any of those requirements. That we, we would not ask for any variances there. The distance from the water table is dictated for the leaching fields. So, in the areas that we've identified for leaching pools, have plenty of depth of groundwater.
How much depth do you need generally?
Well, it, you know, we don't need, it, what you, when you get into shallow areas just means it needs to be wider. So, the calculation of how much footprint you need is dependent on here, on the depth. So, the deeper it is, the less footprint you need. Because you can, you do what's called a sidewall calculation. So, the depth of groundwater in the areas that we looked at was, we didn't worry about it. It was, we, it's plenty of room. Gary did layouts and looking at the depths, and we didn't see any problem with locating the leaching pools. Now, leaching pools are pretty innocuous. You can, you know, you, in terms of where they can be located.
I understood properly. You're proposing to have individual processing units along the way, and then the treated water would go up to a leaching pool. Is that what you're saying? They're not a big treatment plant then?
No. Our recommendation is that, that in the, in the business district-
Right.
-there would be multiple septic tanks, that the properties would go into, multiple properties on, on septic tanks. So, we may have two or three businesses on one septic tank. The liquid from that then gets transported to a treatment site, which can be anywhere, I mean, and then, then it goes to a disposal site. They don't have to be at the same spot.
But the septic tank, the effluent does not get treated then?
Oh, no, it does. It goes to the treatment plant to get treated. The sludge stays in the septic tank and periodically gets removed every seven to 10 years. It does not require removal that often.
How does that differ from a conventional septic tank?
Excuse me?
How does that differ from a conventional septic?
The, it's not a lot, frankly. In newer constructions, we will salvage the existing septic tank and use it, and instead of the liquid just going into the leaching pool, it gets directed to the treatment plant. And in this case, we're suggesting the treatment plant is underneath the parking lots. And if you, I'll show you-
What that does is result-
I'm not recording.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Look at it here while Charlie's doing that. This is an example where all of the wastewater came into this septic tank and then went through the treatment steps. Okay? And in, on the Malibu project, we had septic tanks at the various commercial locations. Just liquid comes into the treatment plant and then goes to the, there's a drain field over here. So, the treatment, this is the treatment system.
So, effluent also will, it's just like a regular septic system, effluent will also go in the ground or it doesn't?
Yeah, but there's a treatment plant in between the leaching pool and the septic tank. Think of it that way. You've got the septic tank on the individual property. The main benefit of that is now you're just transporting liquid. It's huge benefits. The pipe only has to be four inches versus a conventional system is eight inches. The slope of the pipe doesn't have to be as steep because it's just liquid. You're not carrying solids. You don't have to have the velocities. So, you're not going into the water. That's why it's less expensive. And your pumps are pumping water. They're not pumping solids and water. So, you don't have all the operational headaches of rags getting in there and all those headaches. You're just moving water around. So, that's why they're low energy use.
The septic tank is sealed, right? I mean, it's not the ring.
Exactly. It's water tank.
So, there's nothing seeping from the septic tank?
That's correct. It's water-
It's just a settling the salt.
That's right. And for discussion purposes, we assume that all of the tanks were replaced, that all, all of the tanks in the system would be new, for, just for preliminary engineering purposes. We didn't try to salvage any. Because that's where-
But in theory, you could salvage some.
Yeah. I mean, the rule of thumb we use is if it's 10 to 15 years old, it's probably good enough. And you, we look at the practices that were used at those times and make, and then you field test them. You go in the field and look at them and decide what to keep.
So, using conventional septic tanks basically?
Exactly. You're using a conventional septic-
And just instead of having a ring where the effluent goes in, you're pumping the liquid to a processing plant.
Exactly. And in this case, we're going to go by gravity to then, small pump station that treats it, and then from there, it can go for reuse or go to a leaching pool, whatever. And that leaching pool can be in another location. Not unusual to be another location.
So, there's no odors involved here either?
No. And the reason there's no odors is that there's a positive ventilation. We've got a thing in here that sucks the air out of these tanks and pushes it through a carbon filter. And we're next to restaurants. And be happy to have you call them. After seven years, we had one call when it started.
Is this a technology that's extensively used or just something that you have developed and are proposing?
I would say it's fairly extensively used. We have a unique twist on it for the nitrogen removal, for the passive technique. But in terms of the septic tank effluent system, it's, I co-authored the manual that's written by the Water and Environment Federation on how you design these things. The state of New York has design guidelines on how you design these things that was published in 1982. So, we engineered this system in New York 35 years ago. So, there's hundreds of them across the country.
I know it's fairly common upstate. Has there been another municipality on Long Island that's used this system to date?
Well, we are approved in Long Island. And, you know, we do have one of our systems in Islip.
In Islip in?
In, you know, Suffolk County.
In a, in a park that the county, the county had it done.
Yeah, we were selected by Suffolk County DPW sole source to put our system into the Suffolk County Environmental Center at Scully Estates. And it's a LEED certified building.
So, it's not, not village-wide, it's just for a particular building?
Right, just for that. In terms of community-wide, you know, the one I showed you earlier, well, the one in Woodstock, there's 400 connections there. That was installed in 1980. This, this one in Maryland has 3,000 connections. This was installed in 1985, started.
We, we think, I mean, we're not married to this process. We think it's the best process for the village because of its performance and low maintenance. But, you know, PO's firm, as well as our firm, have been involved in designing treatment plants of all different types. What's really important about this is, as PO was talking about, that you're just taking water, and as your observation, it's the water that would normally come out of a septic tank, and you're moving water. You're not moving the solids as opposed to, and then you're having a gravity collection system as opposed to a pump to a vacuum system. With a, you know, with a pump system, every building is going to need a generator. Generator has to be exercised every couple of months. You know, so you've got the noise and you're relying on the private homeowner, building owner to maintain that. With sewage treatment, and I've been involved in sewage treatment since 1971, what you want is reliability and low maintenance. Because if it can go wrong, it does go wrong. In this system, I mean, essentially, PO and, and I got involved several years ago because a large developer that we were doing some work for was talking about using PO's system. Because of my background in the county, we were already working on the project, I essentially interviewed PO and I wound up recommending him to the developer, which meant less work for us. But it, it really-
I was floored. I sent him a bottle of wine, I was floored. That doesn't happen with other engineers.
But this-
So, we become buddies for-
This is, I mean, I, I have a lot of confidence in the system. You know, I, I understand where you're going. This is somewhat new for the county, if it's not all over the place. But they've been very receptive when PO and I have gone in there. And we really think it's-
Charlie's done his own independent and spoke to the people at the, at Karen. He wouldn't be supporting us if he didn't think that they were supporting.
I think I understand the difference, just for the public that's listening as well. Right now, we have a conventional septic system that the health department pretty much does not allow us to do anything here.
That's right.
You're going to propose a septic system as well, but it differs, the only way that it really differs is that any liquids do not go into the ground, but go someplace else. And that's why the health department would allow us then to-
Right. And go somewhere else.
Yeah, the terminology, this, well, we're proposing not a septic system. You are, we're proposing a full-fledged wastewater collection, treatment and disposal system. The collection system technique is a septic tank effluent system, which the literature will tell you is not unusually half the cost. Okay? It's, this, a lot of, I mean, we like being here because nobody is familiar with this. So, but we've been doing this for over 30 years now.
Yeah, I want to ask a question on the size of the septic tanks.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that the standard size or will these be specific, specifically built to handle so many buildings? Olivia's-
They are standard sizes. They're the industry standard that we would typically use is about a day and a half of what's called hydraulic residence time. So, we would calculate how much flow we expect to see and then say, if it's 5,000 gallons, that we would provide a 8,000 gallon tank there.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, they, they're all sized properly.
So, if you had a number of dry stores, they could be combined? If you have a restaurant-
Right. A restaurant would be more.
That's correct.
One other question.
But assuming, just, sorry, assuming that part of the goal here is to allow more, more flexibility in the business district than we now have.
Right.
I think we'd want to size these so that things can move back and forth between stores and restaurants.
Right, they change. Yeah, yeah, we got, we deal with that all the time in our, our projects. So, we don't see that, it's, we haven't experienced as a problem. We've got tenant changes that, you know, restaurants go to dry goods and back and forth.
That raises something that I wanted to touch on. And when you're starting from scratch and establishing a district like this, you have tremendous flexibility.
Right.
And what, you know, I would suggest to the, to the village is that you, through us, contact each of the building owners, see how much flow, we, we tell them how much flow they're using now, see how much flow they want, whether it's happy with that or they want more flow. And-
Recognize when they're going to have to pay.
Yeah.
The cost, not, you know, free.
And that, you know, if they, it gives them more economic opportunity. But this way, and you can also, when you're establishing the district, if you have a building property owner that owns six lots in a row and he's not interested in becoming part of the district, no way. You draw the line around them.
I, I think, you know, we've said this earlier tonight, I think, one thing I think we want to be clear about is, we're not looking at a voluntary system here. We, we want everyone, I mean, to solve the problems we have- We want everyone, I mean, to solve the problems we have, we need everyone in the business district.
To be part of it.
To, to, to be required to use this.
Right. Well, the way that we've done this in other communities in New York and other states is that each property owner will be told, this is what you're being allocated, as well as here's the fees that you're going to be assessed. And getting them to buy into that. And naturally, the goal is to make that cost as low as possible. These are the techniques that enable us to achieve that, which then generates the public support.
Okay.
Sorry. One other question. After the water is treated in your plant, you're going to be putting it into, I say, dry wells to recharge. Now, the village has a, about half a mile from them, they have a recharge basin. There used to be an old sand pit.
Where's that? Where is that? North?
Yes, north.
Yeah.
It's down North Sea Road. It's behind a post office.
Okay, yeah. We looked at that area.
Close office by Schmitz?
Yeah. Across the street, back up and in.
Well, what has to be done for all of this stuff, you have to do hydrogeologic testing to, first of all, you've got to know what the soil conditions are, what's the depth of groundwater. If it's an old gravel pit, as long as they haven't mined it down to the groundwater level, then it's usable.
That I can't tell you. I have to go back here.
They usually go down, but it depends. But it's, could be usable. No-
And that's a reasonable distance to pump.
Right. Yeah, that's, good point, Charlie.
I like your proposal because I'm a retired contractor and the less mechanical stuff you have, the lesser go wrong.
Absolutely. We run, by the way, excuse me, we provide engineering oversight to the operation and maintenance on these projects. So if there's something wrong, we're on top of it right away. On these projects, we don't engineer and walk away. We're involved with them all the time. Frankly, we do that so things don't go wrong, as well as we like bragging about how well they're working.
It's all monitored electronically and, you know, PO-
Yeah, the Malibu project, Gary watches from our computer. It's all electronic.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. In your initial phase, would you be looking at this system plus, you know, a more centralized system so we can weigh both of them in?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You'll see that, I mean, we're happy to say you've got A, B, C and D, here's the pluses and minuses of it.
That's included in the scope that you would look at?
Absolutely. That's our standard practice. We do that all, we've done that for East Hampton and all our projects. And, and then it's what's your preference in, by the way, usually boils down to where's the cost differences? And nice to have a contractor that's going to say, you're going to pay better, more or less for that.
This system, I presume, is going to be a lot of digging up in the parking lots to, more than the other system. How about the piping?
No, there won't be more, if nothing, if anything, it'll be less.
Really? Because the other one, I thought it was the piping, it just has like-
Directional drilling?
Yeah.
Well, we can do directional drilling as well.
Right.
Not a problem.
But you have to dig up the ground for the tanks.
Exactly, exactly. So the question to us in the parking lot, we were talking about this, is, you know, you've got so many connections to make that you have to excavate for those connections that, does you, do you really gain a lot?
Sounds like you have less connections with the system than they come actually.
Right, you will, but when you're in those parking lots-
It's a lot of businesses.
Yeah. We frankly would engineer it such that let the contractor decide. It's frankly what's the lowest cost. We don't want to tell them, do it A or B. You can do it A or B, let them decide.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you for entertaining my question. PO, you spoke of-
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself?
Kevin McAllister, N H two O, formerly the daykeeper. PO, you spoke of level of treatment down to three milligrams. Obviously, that's very good treatment, but with respect to the overall loading, have you done an analysis or will there be analysis with respect to full build-out or full potential as it relates to flow and the actual reduction in the nitrogen loading? Because that, that's really key as opposed to-
Yes.
-the level of treatment that you would achieve.
Yes, yeah. We typically do that analysis on all of our reports. I know that the village has already done a build-out analysis, so we've got the numbers. We don't have to reinvent that, so that's not an issue. And to the extent the village wants to, we can put in engineering features to it so that there could be no nitrogen discharge by using the PRB, see?
Second part of that-
And take out more than the wastewater's discharge.
PO, you mentioned reuse, which I think is very progressive. What's the likelihood of the potential for reuse of some of that wastewater on some of the green spaces, which would further treat by virtue of uptake?
Right. Well, we would love to do it. It's really going to boil down in our experience to property owners being willing to accept it. There's golf courses nearby, there's nurseries nearby north of Montague Highway that we've identified, and there's a, there's school fields that we could irrigate subsurface. It's really making, it's more of a go, it's technically feasible and there's good opportunities. It's going to boil down to getting a willing partner. So, and to achieve the treatment levels that are necessary for that type of reuse is a minor cost above what we're doing already. See, that's the, one of the beauties is that we're treating it so high to make a reusable quality is, it's no big deal. Excuse me, just a small, modest, additional step.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, I like the idea of reusing water, because down in Florida, they do it all the time. And what do you do in the wintertime when you get this treated water?
Well, a good question. Fortunately, in your environment, you're not a ski area, so your water demand or wastewater production and the water demand for vegetation are peaking at the same time. So the system would be designed though so that it would discharge to the ground when the reuse demand was less than the wastewater production. So we would have, it would be designed for complete disposal for fail-safe purposes. So you always have, so that you're not relying on that.
You wouldn't recommend putting in some type of a storage tank or something like that?
It's not quite, well, we've done that on our projects. It's a good chunk of change. It's expensive because it, it's a lot of money. It's, you're not going to want to pay the bill. And it's a big tank. Yeah. So again, we engineered a no-discharge system in California where it's, but for a 20,000 gallon a day system, the storage tank is 800,000 gallons. And that's in an arid environment, so.
Just one maybe final question.
Sure.
So just in terms of when we look at this, you, for something with the load that we're talking about, 120,000, whatever.
Right.
That's something you've, you've done before. This would not be the first time.
Our project in Maryland was 900,000 gallons a day. And the project was built in phases. It was modular.
Uh huh.
And it was in five phases. So we did one phase, brought customers online, built another phase, brought additional, and that's the beauty of the approach. And you can, if I may just show you this quick, you'll see that in the slide of the treatment system, this is the, where we use, and you'll see how they're just modulators. And we've just added a new one when we got the additional flow.
And, you know, what, what you can do with that also, and we, we used to do in the county, you can, you have your district and then 10 years from now, someone wants to join, rather than extend the district boundary, they could be a contract fee, pay a connection fee. And, and this system allows modularity to-
Yeah, and this one was 900,000 gallons a day. And this one, we won the awards for, is, and again, a piece was built at the time. So, so that's not, whereas other types of system, you've got to buy them in big chunks, big chunks. That's the difference.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments. Can I ask, you mentioned in your meetings, your last meeting, that you were going to make a decision tonight? Is that still your statement?
No, 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 no.
What was I going to say?
We'll make a decision very soon.
Right, 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 okay.
Good stuff. So the third presentation is from the H two M team. I want to once again publicly thank the team for their presentation at the public meeting in the spring, which was a terrific presentation, very helpful. The way we've been working it is about 15 minutes for your presentation and then question and answer afterwards.
Excellent, excellent, that's great. Okay, well, I am not going to repeat the PowerPoint.
Thank you.
That was an hour PowerPoint. It has been on the website since April 3rd.
Right.
And the proposal that we wrote has been on the village's website since, since we wrote the proposal, so. With me is Mark Wagner. Mark is a partner at Cameron Engineering. And Mark, you want to just talk them a little bit about yourself?
It's a pleasure to be here to make the presentation with Frank. I'm a partner at Cameron Engineering. I head up the water, wastewater environmental restoration. I'm starting my 30th year with Cameron and total 36 years in wastewater. And I was glad that Frank invited me onto the team. We have been competing against each other for the last 20 years and we figured why don't we try teaming up so we could cut down on half the paperwork? So it's a pleasure to be here and look forward to answering your questions and answers.
First of all, it would be an honor and a privilege to work for the village. I just need to say that. I neglected to say that at the last presentation, but if you haven't found out already, we really, really want to work for you. We want to help you solve this problem. One of the, the first, first, you recognize this, we talked about this. Our proposal is simply for the map and plan. This is the legal document that forms the sewer district. This is where all the costs come into play, all the legal ramifications. The reason we included the SECA is because without SECA, this does not go to the next phase. You need companion documents to do that. Now, one of, what, if you look at some of these things, determine boundaries. We've determined the boundaries. The boundaries, we've worked with Mark already. We know what they are. We're trying to do this as quickly and as expediently as possible with the proper amount of public input. And there's no reason to reinvent the wheel here. We've already got the flows. We, you know, with some tweaking, I know there's some, some lots that may be included, but that's okay. We've done, we've done the cost analysis field. We did the, we have the county's numbers and then we took it to what we call the hybrid system. And once again, our proposal, the presentation, the video is on the website, so if you forget, you can always feel free to go back to that. But we came up with a system that was almost $5 million cheaper than what the, than what the county proposed. That's $5 million. That's a lot of money. And that took, that took a lot of calculations just to be, we just didn't pull these numbers out of the air. We calculated, we calculated what we thought it would be. And, and we didn't have the luxury of working with anybody because we're trying to propose. So the numbers are going to be refined. You recall that we talked about putting the treatment plant up where the now dog park is?
Adjacent to it.
Adjacent to it, right. We talked about low-pressure sewers. Why? Because the low pressure is perfect for where, where your se- where your cesspools are located are in the back. So, so where se- so this way, we put the pump station there and then we pump right into the, the low pressure which will be installed in the parking lot underneath the grade, bi-directional drilling. So there would be, there's no gravity sewers. Can you imagine a gravity sewer? And I showed you the pictures of a typical gravity sewer installation, deep trenches, you're in groundwater. Can you imagine that situation on Main Street? Can, can you possibly fathom that and what the traffic would be like? This way, we're in the back, we get to resurface the parking lots, there's readily access there, so we talked about that. We talked about the MBR system and why. Why? Because that's the limit of technology. We can't do any better than that. The, one of the-
One of the documents.
This is the summary document that we did for Suffolk County Department of Health Services. It's, it's made, it's, it's, it's unpurposely small. The document is actually maybe two inches thick. And, and what this investigator was, alternative onsite systems for achieving 10 milligrams per liter or less. These systems are now approved for 15,000 gallons a day. Your system is 145,000 gallons a day. The county will never allow it. They will not allow. That's why when we did the sewer capacity study for Southampton, we didn't even talk about it because it wasn't even an option. They wouldn't allow it, so why are we even, why are we even discussing this? So I just wanted to bring that one point down. I guess, I guess, what, why do we, why do we bring Cameron on board? And Mark has a lot of experience with, with this area and we'd just like to let him explain some of that?
Frank needed a ride out here personally. It's part of the reason why I think I'm on the team. We've been around for 30 years, myself, in addition to running, being a partner and, and running that division. I'm a certified wastewater treatment operator. I've operated plants for 15,000 gallons a day up to 72 million gallons a day. We've done extensive studies. I think H two M and Cameron Engineering are the only two firms that have brought in innovative technology to Suffolk County in the last five years of any, of any size with the air rotor and the SBRs.
For the Village of Greenport and the Village of Patro. We happen to both take the same process.
And we're both meeting less than, less than five milligrams per liter. I can't speak exactly in the amount of grants, but I can tell you Cameron Engineering, we, Greenport was 80% funded by grants. We've gotten maybe 35, 40 million, uh, $40 million worth of grants for our clients. So we know the system, we have excellent regulatory experience. Our SECA team, our environmental and our GIS, it's a great complement to H two M, so we really feel comfortable. And that, and that, again, it's not only the, the design of the facility, we know operations. I've been training, I'm a certified New York State, I've been training for 33 years. All, all the operators that are out in Nassau and Suffolk County have come through my courses. So we're hands-on people, we know how to operate these systems. I said to Frank, with all the emphasis on the nitrogen reduction, there's, there's been a lot of movement towards, I'm going to say innovative systems, basically shrinking down a conventional wastewater treatment plant, shrinking it down and putting it in somebody's backyard. Now, me being an operator for 35 years, I don't even want one of these things in my backyard. I have a hard enough time operating my, my koi pond. And what I said to Frank and others, if you have a fish tank, it's much easier to maintain a 500 gallon a day, a 500 gallon fish tank than a 10 gallon fish tank with goldfish in it. So these systems that, and you're going to see a lot of action about putting these in people's backyard. I said, the last presentation I made was you take six ounces of Clorox bleach, you're cleaning up your bathroom or your kitchen and you put it down the sink, you have about a 60, 70 milligram per liter dose in your biological system, your little mini wastewater plant. It's not going to work. So really, there is some economy of scale about having a treatment plant of certain size that it can absorb some shock loads from. It's amazing what people put down the sink, so. And this is going to be a groundwater discharge, so it's important to have good solid technology, good filtering. The MBR is going to get us down to two, three milligrams per liter. Excellent opportunity to get nutrients, heavy metals, what have you out of it. So I'm really excited about the-
Okay, Southampton.
Southampton Hospital. We, we've been working with Southampton on and off for many years. I was just down there two weeks ago with Dave Lopez. He has an RBC technology. One of his units has failed, so we're going to be over there replacing it. And I thought that that might have some play with the village's system years ago, but the site, it's a beautiful site, but the building and the technology in there really doesn't lend itself for, for 150,000 gallons a day. Plus, they have their own capacity, it's 105,000 gallon a day. But they're going to have to sink some money into it. It's kind of a shame, but they're going to have to sink some money because they still haven't consummated the arrangement with Stony Brook Hospital. But I could see at some point, they'll probably make that deal and maybe put a new hospital over at the campus. And that will be a great asset for whoever moves in, you know, if it's condos or if it's another arrangement to have, to have a facility there. But we know the hospital, we, we know the groundwater situation, we know that the drainage fields and, and the situation with Agawam Lake, but this, this is an excellent opportunity to get, get yourself a system so that the business, the wet businesses can continue to treat without causing environmental impact. And the dry systems, maybe they can go wet and maybe even, you know, get an apartment or two in accordance with your master plant, you know, do a little redevelopment in, in the commercial district.
So, I mean, that's 15 minutes.
Thank you. Let me start maybe, ask you a question, which is, we've recently been hearing a lot about phosphates and their impact on the lake. Can you talk a little bit about your system and phosphates?
Sure, sure. The process we're proposing is a biological process. What biology needs is, you know, carbon, nitrogen, and phosphorus. That's, that's what, that's what they live on. So just by, without doing anything, we're going to get phosphorus absorption by the cell particles, right off the bat. The big question is, to what limit do you want to remove phosphorus to? And, and the worst that can happen with the, with the MBR is, we add a coagulant and precipitate out the phosphorus. So that's the worst that's gonna happen. The nitrogen, we already know is going to be handled, and the carbon is a, is a product for, for life, so it's going to be boosted up. So phosphorus is a nutrient. It's going to add to algae blooms, it's a known fact, but it's, it's a biological necessity, and that's what the process is going to do.
Okay.
One question. With the MBR process, do you think we'll be able to achieve, to be able to do deep well recharges for the effluent?
You know, that's, on Long Island, there has not been one installation, not one. And like anything else, if, if, the, the science is there, the technology is there, it's a proven system.
Because California requires it.
Absolutely. It's, it's a form of reuse. That's what you're doing, you're reusing the water. Here in Suffolk County, it's a little bit different. And the perfect example I can give you is the wastewater reuse project at Riverhead. Here is a plant that, that we're using, reusing the wastewater to irrigate the Indian Island Gulf of East. Well, to get to that point, we had to, the town spent probably over $200,000 to prove to Suffolk County that the technology worked, and we did that. We have approval. We're in the construction right now for wastewater reuse system.
I was just playing it today, I saw the construction, it's been going on for a while.
Well, we, we, physical construct, it's a two-year program, and it's gotta be phased in because it's an active system.
I'd like to know how the nuts and bolts of this operation works.
I'd love to take you there. I can bore you.
I'm familiar with this treatment plant in Southampton, because I've been in there testing backflow devices. I'm a retired plumbing contractor, and in my textbook, it's got, I think it was a Minnesota sewer treatment plant telling you how the water comes out, 90% pure after you purify it.
Yeah. So, so to get back, you know, to the, to the deep well recharge, it's like anything else in Suffolk County, you're going to have to demonstrate it, you're going to have to prove it, you're going to have to, you know, if you're willing, Riverhead took us nine years to get the wastewater reuse system going. If you're willing to wait, then it's something we can do. I don't, at this point, see, it costs money to, to do that, you have to drive wells, it's expensive. You know, what, the budget right now might not be able to afford that. And the advantage is, you know, I, you know, when you start driving deep wells into other aquifers, I think you're gonna have some issues in Suffolk County.
I wanna add to that, a project that we did in Nassau County was, because of sewerine, which is much more extensive to the west, the sewerine lowers the groundwater level. So a lot of the, the streams and rivers located to the west have basically, in some cases, have run dry. So they, they call it the Fan Study, Flow Augmentation Need Study, was some of the districts, Suffolk County and Western Suffolk, and Nassau County DPW, they had to do studies to how would you restore the groundwater, the, the negative impacts from sewerine. They did, they did the deep well recharge up at East Meadow, they ran a very sophisticated facility, pumped the water up to East Meadow, recharged it, and very, very, very expensive. We, we don't have a water shortage in Nassau or Suffolk County. Water is plentiful, it's cheap, it probably should be more expen, we probably should charge more for it, and then people would appreciate it a little bit more. And when you get to these other areas, effluent reuse, California, Southwest, Florida, they're selling this stuff at 75% of potable water. It's, it's a commodity. So right now, I, I would be more concerned in the environmental impact that if you were looking at deep recharge, that you would be negatively impacting the natural flow of water that's, that's going, you know, to Lake Agawam to the south.
I have a couple of questions. First, how would you compare the system that you are proposing, that you are championing, with a septic tank effluent collection system?
Septic tank effluent pumping, step system. Step system, the first thing you need is a septic tank. Do you know for a fact that there's septic tanks in the backyards?
There gotta be, but.
You don't know, you don't know that.
But they can add them though.
They could have cesspools.
Yeah, cesspools.
So if they don't, right, 90%.
90% of cesspools, yeah.
So, but what you just said just answers your own question.
Well, they have to add the septic tank.
You'd have to put in a septic tank.
Right.
Now you'd have to put in a septic tank in groundwater, deep excavation, you know, the, how big do we make them, and then what? What we're proposing is exactly the same thing. We're eliminating the septic tank portion because the pumps that we're saying, and we have 13 miles of it in Patro, this is not new. This is a proven system. Suffolk County approves it. I've got 13 miles of it in it. It takes the sep, it takes the sewage right out of the home, it's got a grinder pump in it, grinds it up to a slurry and pumps it out. Why would you wanna put in a septic tank, because you probably don't have one, and then deal with the solids that accumulate in the septic tank? Then you have to pump that out. So send it down to treatment plant. Let, let the treatment plant do what it's supposed to do.
What happens with the solids with the treatment plant? They have to sort of ship them out someplace, right?
That's a byproduct of the process. It's, it's essentially an inert subject, substance, it's, it's, it's dead cells, it's dead slug cells, and they get pumped out every so often. But what we do is we thicken it to a, to a higher concentration, so there's less truckloads that are going out. And if I took you down to a couple of the plants, I'll take you down to Patro, and when they're, when they're, or Riverhead, or Port Jeff, or Huntington, or Oyster Bay, or any of the other plants we have online, and you stand there, you'll see what it's all about. You'll see what the consistency is, you'll see the guy pulling the load, and they bring it down to Bergen Point.
I understand, though, one of the advantages of the septic tank effluent system is less mechanicals, it's less maintenance.
That's just a conveyance system. It's not a process, it's not a treatment process.
The septic tank effluent, you still have a pump. If your system, if your homeowner's had septic tanks, which 90% don't, but if you had that.
They're gonna have to add the septic.
So the septic tank is basically usually sized for 24, 48 hours of detention time, and that acts for your heavy, your solids will settle out, and then your water hypothetically leaving. If you have a septic tank and you go to leach pools, the water would go out to the leach pools and down. If you had the septic tank, then I, I might say there might be a trade-off, but you still have, the septic tank effluent pumping system, you still have a pump.
Correct.
So with, with the, with like the E1 system, you have a small 60, 70 gallon tank with your two pumps in there, so you don't have this tank to maintain. And, and basically, since you have cesspools, there is no benefit to putting, you couldn't put these pumps.
But you need, but you need a, a, some kind of a vacuum system at each individual owner to, how does?
It's not a vacuum, it's usually, you can, depending on the orientation of the, of the parcels, one, one or two homes per, per small pump station.
Right. Will have.
But you know, the argument is that the septic tank is removing 60 to 70% of the, of the organic content.
Right.
Well, that's very interesting. But the only problem is that the biology at the plant needs that food. It's like, you know, they, they need that food. Why are you taking it out when that's what thrive, that's what they need to survive? So you're developing the biology with, with, you know, that, that's, if you don't need to do that there, why do?
If I remember correctly, if I remember, and I forgot which one, it was aerobic and anaerobic, when you had oxygen, one, one heats up the other and kills it, purifies the water out. And it's in my old plummy textbook.
Well, the, the septic tank or the cesspool you have, it's anaerobic, no, no dissolved oxygen.
Okay.
And, and the solids on the bottom of a septic tank anaerobically digest, and that's a good thing. You get, you get some volume reduction, you get some stabilization of, of the solids. Most people don't do any maintenance of it. The first time they realize that they might have a problem with their system is that there's water bubbling to the surface, not at the septic tank, usually on the leach fields because the solids have transferred down. Now they're in the, in the pool, and they haven't pumped that out in 15 years. I lived in two houses with onsite systems, one failed on my daughter's Holy Communion, and the second house was my daughter's confirmation, when they had like 20, 30 people there. So it's a hydraulic failure. It's not, it's, it's solids and grease and what ha, what have you have, have moved themselves into the, to the recharge pools where they blinded the soils. So when people say, you know, there's a problem with the thing, it's not a nitrogen problem, it's, it's a hydraulic problem because the solids have moved.
Migrated downstream.
And blinded the soils.
Yeah, but of course, whoever puts the system in, the system will monitor that and will be pumping them when they need to be. I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be up to the individual, it's gonna be up to whoever's maintaining it.
Right.
If, if it's mandated, you know, that you have to pump your septic, you know, which would be a great thing, you know, every, once a year, once every two years.
Well, we'll be, we'll be taking care of whoever's managing the system.
Right, so that's another expense for the sewer district, because.
Well, you have to monitor the system too. I mean, someone's gonna monitor any system, I mean.
You have to monitor it, but who's paying for the solids removal? Who's paying for the upkeep? You know, to monitor something costs money. It sounds, it sounds cheap, but you know, it doesn't sound significant, but you know, we have the similar problems with grease traps all across some of our clients. And just to monitor grease traps, you know, now you're talking about monitoring grease traps, septic tanks. It becomes almost a full-time, it is, it's a full-time job.
I mean, I was trying to get from you a comparison, a pros and cons of, you know, one system versus the other, that's basically my question.
If you had a septic tank, I would consider it, but since you don't know what you have, you're just adding costs to the budget.
The other question I had was for the, if the, if the hospital treatments center were to become available, would that be of any interest to the village in, to, as a, as a system to complement with yours?
Well, as, okay.
Yeah, I would say the, the hospital system is 40-plus years old.
Right.
It has, it has a new, relatively new D-Nite filter, because we, we did that with the hospital about, whenever I say five years, it's, it's probably eight years. So they have a D-Nite filter, they have a suspended growth, or be, I mean fixed growth RBC, it's, it's a proven technology, very low-tech, works well with the hospital because it doesn't count on aeration. You know, I, I always tell them, keep it simple, because if you have, if you have something that's, that's blowing air and you have people in the parking lot, you got aerosols, you know, you're discharging air from the building. So it's, it's a very sturdy process we're putting in the new RBC there. So if you said, hey, tomorrow, could we integrate it, you know, they're gone.
Right. But can we convert it, maybe can we convert it to an MBR? Is that possible?
The MBR, because of the depth of the tanks there, it would, it would have to be a major retrofit of, of the building and the.
So it's really not.
No.
It's not a good solution.
It's not. We looked at it in the sewer capacity study, the tanks are four foot deep, normally aeration tanks are 10 to 12 feet deep. I mean, that's by standard. We're not making that number up. There's actually a book, standards that we have to follow, and, and in order for aeration tank to work properly, you need depth, you need time for the, the air to travel up and come in contact with the, with the wastewater. Well, if it's only four feet deep, it's not gonna have much oxygen transfer. That's why you need a deep tank. Those tanks are only four feet deep.
Right. So to convert it, I mean, if you're gonna build a system, instead of building, to convert, it's a major endeavor?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we, and we pointed this out already, we did this part of it. The, the part that we didn't, that needs to be readdressed, and I said this during the presentation, it has to be looked at again, and that's the potential for, for gaining the site and using the site for maybe something with future development of the site. So that, you know, and then you have a private public partnership working for you, you know, that's potential.
I think also, one thing we talked about last time was the timeframe is very different because even if the hospital got approval tomorrow, we're, we're actually building a medical facility, we're talking about probably five to six years before it comes online. So we're talking about something that might have some long-term use but is not gonna address the.
It's not gonna be near term. I was speaking with Dave Lopez, and he, he said this, they're building like a $10 million ER.
Right.
And the deal with, with Stony Brook hasn't happened yet, but if it were to happen, say, in the near future, I would just say, you're probably looking five to seven years.
Which in the medical world is a good horizon.
Which is a good horizon.
Oh, it's wonderful, right.
Right, it's a great horizon, it's just different than ours.
So it's not a, really a valid option.
But you know what, it's, it's something to explore. And, and the fact that we know that, you know, we have, Mark is working for them now, I think, that, that'll put your mind at ease, it's due diligence, it should be done.
Okay, other questions?
I wanna ask a question. Now, you're putting these, say, 60 to 75 gallon tanks in it with, with dual pumps in there, how many buildings are gonna be hooked to these?
Well, we, when we did, we actually laid out the system. We, and it's on the presentation and it, and the, and the PowerPoint slides are shown on there also. We cut the system down from, I think, 130 pumps to 10 pump stations. And that was what we called the hybrid system. So, and that was just a conversation that Mark and I had, you know, his, his major concern was, right, we have so many pumps, what can we do? And, and it was Mark who said, you know, let, let's try to maybe use a gravity system in combination. So we started playing around with some of the numbers, some of the flows, and therefore we got it down. That's why we're reducing the cost by almost $5 million because of that.
So what you're playing, I'm thinking about Joe's line, where it's a high one and low on the other end. So would you have a gravity system coming down the back of the parking lot to a collection point in the lower end of the parking lot, then pump it over to?
That's it, that's it. And it'd be on a generator, because in case of power outage. So we can string those units up and maybe one loop, maybe one home run kind of thing, or individual generators, and they're not big generators. And if you put them in sound attenuating enclosures, you know, you could, you could talk.
Are these pumps you're putting in, are they gonna be alternating pumps or are they gonna back up failure pumps?
They would be alternating with a duplicate online spare.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, once again.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, they're streaming out, folks. And I think we're gonna try to move forward by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.